Hello students, welcome to this special session on universal human values. I have called this session so that in case if you have some queries related to this topic and rather related to this course, for which we are soon going to have an exam, then you can ask me. The kind of things that might be asked in the exam would be related to those topics that we have discussed in some sessions that I had with you, in which I gave you some topics to share your ideas and thoughts and you all discussed those topics and the similar topics I would be asking in exam. Okay, so what are some of the important areas of consideration in this course? What are those areas of consideration in this course? Let's have a brief look at those areas. First and foremost, an important thing for us to understand is what is universal human values? Why are human values important? What is their relevance? What are different kind of human values that you can call universal? We had a very long debate on this. That can we have some values which are universal or values are all subjective? And do they change from place to place and time to time or can we have some values which do not change from time to time and place to place? So some examples of such values that we all took up like respect towards women and being bringing justice for the weaker sections, not oppressing the weak. Some of these values and being committed to your duty promoting ethics and integrity. And we took a lot, there were many human values that we discussed, commitment to truth, loyalty, kindness and compassion and empathy. So it depends upon which values you want to prefer. The idea here is that you should have some understanding of what human values are and why we say that certain human values are universal. What is meant by this idea that human values are universal? Basically it means is that human values, those human values which apply to every society, they apply to every society, every region. Indians, Americans, Africans, Asians, Europeans, within India, North Indians, South Indians, East Indians, West Indians, Central Indians, everywhere, these values do not change. So such broad understanding of universal human values you should have. Why do we need these values? Especially why engineers need these values? There were some examples that we discussed and I'm moving forward now. These are the important topics that we have discussed in our classes and you can take a screenshot of these topics. The topics here are as the first topic itself, the universal human values that constitutes to be the subject and the title of our subject also, universal human values. This topic itself, this words itself is important. The next important topic here is for exam is idea of happiness. What is happiness? So we all need to understand that what is happiness and we need to define happiness in a way. How do we define happiness? How do we create an understanding of happiness? Now we all have to make a definition which is true to our own self. We cannot copy this definition from someone else. What is your idea of happiness? How do you define happiness? Can someone explain me what is happiness? What is your idea of happiness? How do you, what constitutes to be happiness? Can someone define this? What constitutes to be happiness? So you can define happiness the way you want. For someone happiness could be realization of goals, the goals that you have set for yourself. For someone happiness could be to achieve a good health. For someone happiness could be to live a life where you can do some service for others, where you can serve others, serve the society, serve your family members or help others. For someone happiness could be pursuit of material wealth. For some other person happiness could be pursuit of your hobbies, of your interests. For someone happiness could be a fulfilling relationship. I request all to please mute your minds unless you're speaking or else I'll have to eliminate you from this meeting. I will not tolerate these kind of noises. Please maintain the decorum. So whatever suggesting was, what is the idea of happiness? How can you define what happiness is? Yes, does someone want to speak?
Yes sir.
Yes question?
Sir, I want to define happiness in a way that I can help somebody that in this, in that way I can help. Whenever I, whenever I, I help somebody then I, I am feel happy in my internal.
Okay, that good. So that is your definition of happiness that you are able to help others. Can someone else also, would someone else also like to define happiness? What is happiness? So as I said.
Helping others is.
Yes, Suresh, go ahead.
I'm defining happiness in a way that I, this one is happiness for me but in the end of the day, helping someone gives me a mental peace which is the core of my happiness.
Yes, helping others give you mental peace. Good. So see both of you define happiness in a way which reflects the idea of service before self, serving others before your own self. Now when you explain these things that okay, this is how I define happiness then it is a great idea to explain why do you think this is true? So why helping others is a good thing? Why helping others could be your definition of happiness? So like the second person, he also added one more line here that when I help others, it gives me mental peace. So that can be a reason that you can use to substantiate your definition of happiness. Now when you explain happiness, you can also add here why or you can also add here some examples of some role models or some people whom you think have pursued happiness in that particular fashion. And what happiness when, and what happens when you do not, you're not able to attain those, those goals. So in case if you're not able to help others, what happens? What other repercussions for society? Basically what I want you to tell here is that whenever you, whenever you write an answer or whenever you speak on a, on a topic, try to deal with different aspects of it. That this is how you define it, this is how, why this is, why you define it like that? And this is what the implications are and maybe there are some shortcomings also. What are some people, who are some people who might have followed those things and so on so. So basically try to deal with, with different ideas of those and try to deal with different ideas. Don't not just write, okay, this is the definition, this is in two lines. Don't just end your answer in two lines, that I think happiness is serving others. Rather be prepared for a more fulfilling answer, an answer which takes up some more dimensions. Got it? Next topic that we think we should consider here is harmony. What is harmony? Is harmony?
Harmony is something. So in my opinion harmony, something can say that living with each meaning.
I agree that I'm not able to hear you. You do what network issues I think, you do network issues I think, I'm not able to hear you. But I appreciate that you're putting forward your views. So harmony is when, harmony means when there is coherence, when two or more different entities they work in synergy, they, there is collaboration between them. So they both do not negate each other, they do not create conflicts and stress with each other. Harmony could be between different entities, harmony could be between you, within you also. Between, for example, harmony could be between your goals and your values. Harmony could be between you and your family. Harmony could be between you and society. Harmony could be between your pursuit of material wealth and between your commitment to values. So there are basically these different entities. These could be collection of values, this could, could be family, nation, society on one side and individual on the other side. So basically all these different entities, whether abstract or concrete, whether, whether composed of humans or whether composed of ideas, all these different entities where there are possibilities of conflicts and stress. So when you resolve those stress and when you create a common attitude, an attitude which dilutes the differences between them and creates a situation where all of them or both of, both of them or maybe more than all the two entities which whatever you have considered, all of them proceed in a win-win situation. So this is difficult to achieve and why, and now this is how we define harmony. How do we achieve harmony and what happens when we don't achieve harmony? So for example, suppose you have set goals for yourself, okay, on the one hand your goal is pursuit of material wealth. Suppose you want to attain material wealth of high altitudes. You want to amass a huge fortune, this is your goal. But suppose your values are something else, your values are preventing you from attaining that wealth. How do you create harmony between them? Maybe you will have to scale down one, maybe you will have to modify some other or maybe you have to redefine those things in a way that they, that they are in coherence. You understand what coherence is? I told you about this word in one of the session coherence. So these are the kind of things that you should be able to discuss, that they, which are related to harmony. And as I said harmony in different, different aspects of harmony, you should be able to address. Next is the idea of ethics, what are ethics? I remember we had long discussions on this, ethics, what are ethics? Why they are important? Ethics and integrity, I think two classes I took on this. Ethics and integrity. I also gave a question to you in class which was related to that show the relevance of ethics and integrity in your professional life and in your personal life. So why are ethics important? Why, why integrity is important? I remember we had a discussion on that, lot of you came up with some interesting ideas. So whatever profession you think of, the profession could be of a taxi driver, I remember there was one person. I think who, and I asked you that think about your fathers or your mothers, what profession they are engaged in? What are the, what is the job they are taking up? And think okay, in that particular job, in that particular source of livelihood, why it is important for people to exhibit integrity and exhibit ethics? So for a farmer, why are ethics important for a farmer? Many of you were children of farmers. So I asked you this question, why ethics are important for a farmer? Similarly, why ethics are important for a driver, a taxi driver or a truck driver? Why ethics are important for a software engineer? Most of you are going to be a software engineer, that is a profession that we are preparing for. Why are ethics important for a software engineer? What would happen if a software engineer deviates from ethics? What would happen if a manager deviates from ethics? What would happen when the company it deviates from ethics? So all these kind of, these are the kind of questions that we discussed in classes and you should also be able to think and ponder over that why ethics are important. Ethics and what basically ethics are, you must have heard of this word morality, what is morality? So what is morality? You all know morality is what differentiates, what the difference between the right and wrong. So what is right, what is wrong? How do you define what is right, what is wrong? So that difference of what is right and what is wrong. This is something which, which we discuss in this concept of ethics. Got it? So this is why ethics are important. Ethics are important because they help us stay on the right track and in the short term maybe they may not show good results but in the long term they are very important. Ethics are that fountain from which morality flows. So ethics are sort of morality but in a term which is, which has broader implications than morality. Okay, so that, that this ethics is important, harmony is important, happiness is important, universal human values, this is important, okay? And next topic which is important is integrity. What is integrity? Why is integrity important? What is integrity? I explained you this situation that what is integrity? Integrity is when what you claim to do in public life and what you actually do, there is a synergy between that. So if you claim that you are working on some innovative product, integrity is that you actually work on some innovative product, you do not copy your entire product from somewhere else and then claim it as your own. Integrity is showing commitment to the values that you profess to follow. So if I'm a teacher, I should, my integrity lies in being true to my profession and teaching you the best of things that are required by you all, not promoting my own personal agenda. This is what integrity would constitute to be, this would be just one example of what integrity would be for a teacher. Similarly, what do you mean by integrity for a student? So for a student, one thing is that you can go and fetch marks on the basis of some unethical means but that is not what integrity would be for you. So this is how you need to define integrity for different people depending upon what profession they follow and likewise ethics also you need to understand. Next topic that we all discussed in our classes also was related to duty. What is duty? And then I asked you all to create a juxtaposition between duty and goals. Why is duty important? What is duty and what are goals? So the concept of duty, basically there have been many philosophers like Kant. In India, our philosophy, philosophical texts like Bhagavad Gita, one of the, the central principle which they propound is commitment to duty and not to be obsessed with the goals but rather not to be obsessed with the outcomes. So karma nevaadikarastey ma phale shukadaachan. This is a very iconic slogan from Bhagavad Gita that resonates with a lot of other philosophies also which emphasize the importance of being committed to your duty. So do what you are expected to do, what your task is and sometimes or rather quite often do not be preoccupied with the, with the outcomes, what the consequences would be. But this, this dialectics between duty and outcomes on the one side or between the process. I remember we had a debate on this also, that what is process and what is? What is more important? The process or the efforts or the journey? Or what is more important? The destination, the outcomes, the result? I remember we had a, this session in one or two sections.
Yes sir. It was a good group.
Say again please, Suresh, I'm not able to hear you. You can type also in case.
Sir, it was a group discussion session, no?
Yeah, there was a group discussion session and in another section I held, I had held a debate also in which, in which many people spoke. So this dialectics or this balance between duty and, and goal, goals and between efforts and result, between the process and the outcomes, between the journey and the destination. This is also an important area of investigation and analysis for all of us, which we should all be prepared to discuss. The next important topic that you're moving from here is self-realization. What is self-realization? What is self-realization? See, most of us, we are all in, we are always in, we are always trying very hard to understand the world around us. You are all engineers, you're trying to understand how technical things work, how networking work or how coding happens, how different languages are there, different architectural schemas and algorithms, you all want to understand. You basically, you, you have devoted your life to understand the technical world around yourself. Likewise, a mechanical engineer might be dealing with machines, a civil engineer might be dealing with bridges and buildings. A botanist might be dealing with plants, okay? A geologist might be trying to understand the different species of animals. Amidst all these discussions here, we are trying to understand the world around us, we sometime forget how important it is to understand who we are, what I am. So how you as a human being is different from some other human being? How are you different? How are you similar? And basically who you are? Who are you? What is your identity? What are your desires? Why do these desires exist in you? Suppose you want to have some goal before you, want, want to, you want to do something, you want to get something, why do you want to get, to get those things? Is it because those desires are inherently, they are born in you or they are just imitation of someone who, who has been able to impress you, who has been able to cast a very strong impression on you? So these are also some questions that you have to understand. This self-realization basically means knowing about myself, knowing about self. Okay, realize, realize means understand what self is and then live our life according to what our true self is. Okay, so for example, whether you want to be a poet or whether you want to be an industrialist, whether you want to have a startup or whether you want to devote your life trying to build some good products for our country, whether you want to, whatever you want to do. I do, why you want to do those things? What are the roots of those desires? Some childhood trauma, something that happened in your childhood, something which happens in your family, something which you might have seen in your friends, some teacher who might have left a very strong impression on you. Where do those ideas originate from? It is very important to understand them. So it's a long discussion, a very, very, lot of philosophies are there which try to address this question of self-realization. Have you heard about this Moslow's Pyramid of Hierarchies? Moslow's Pyramids of Hierarchies where, where there are, I think, five categories of needs which Moslow has discussed. So he has basically created a triangle and what he, in that triangle basically, what he does is that he has created five categories. So in the fifth category, there is, there are, in the lower section, there are physical category, there are physical needs. For example, what is the most important thing for you? The most important for you is your safety, physical safety. Next comes in hunger and physical needs. Then comes and, then comes, it's about family, it's about desire for love and all those things. So as we keep moving towards the top, we, we come to a point when all our desires, all human desires are met. At the top, there is the importance of knowing about yourself, self-realization and so on. So you might have seen that a lot of people, what they do is celebrities, for example, when they become rich, when they, when they have attained everything that most of the other people are trying to attain. Then these people, they start engaging their energies with, into questions such as who we are, what we are doing, so and so and this and that. So self-realization is very important. I remember in one of the sessions with you, I gave you this quotation also of, of a very famous American writer who said that lack of self-realization can kill a person or harm a person just like lack of bread can, can. So for example, just like bread is very important for you, bread means food. Just like food is very important for your existence, similarly self-realization is very, also very important for your existence. Otherwise you would waste your life, otherwise you will keep fighting and keep struggling with some, some issues. Okay, so that is the idea of self-realization. Next is, next topic we're moving towards is ethical dilemmas. What are ethical dilemmas? Can someone explain you what ethical dilemmas are?
Yes sir, ethical dilemmas, we can say that in ethics, some people say that ethics, some ethics are important and some are not. In different societies, the definition of ethics are very different. So we can say that it is like a dilemma where some ethics are relevant for different people but irrelevant for some group of peoples.
Okay, sir, thank you Suresh. I will try to explain this idea of ethical dilemmas. What is a dilemma first of all? A dilemma is a situation in which you have two or more choices before you and both of those choices are equal, are good or both of those choices are bad. So consider like this, if you have two choices in front of you and one choice is good and one choice is bad, then making a decision is very easy, you can take up the good choice. But what if both the two choices are good and what if both the two choices are bad? So this is what dilemma is. Like many of you, some, or some of you, you might get offers of a campus placement, some good company and you might also get some offers of M-Tech from some good IITs or some other institute. Then what do you do? Whether you go for a masters from a very good institute or whether you go up and take an offer from a very good company? These are both good decisions. So this is a dilemma. So this is what meaning of dilemma is and likewise, there may be situation where both the two things are equally bad. What do you do in those situations? That is also a dilemma. Now ethical dilemmas are those dilemmas where the question of ethics is also involved. I'll give you a very good example of ethical dilemma. Consider there is a soldier, okay, consider there is a soldier. And this soldier, suppose this soldier, this soldier has to do two things. He has an ailing mother, okay, at home, who is entirely dependent on him, this mother. And there is no one else in this world of that mother except for him. And on the second side, there is the country which needs, there is a war happening at the borders. So what should this soldier do? Should he take care of his ailing mother and stay at home or should he go and save his motherland or commit himself to his duty? Which duty is more important? Duty towards his mother or duty towards his country? Which duty should he prefer? And the situation is this that he cannot take up both the two situation, two things together. This is an ethical dilemma. So likewise you also would be confronted with this. Right now our, our country is confronting. Is, is our country, our prime minister, you see how much a foreign country is trying to put pressure on us. It is exerting pressure on us that India should accept the demands of Americans with respect to trades policies. But if, if we follow, if we accept those trade policies, the demands of Americans, then what would happen? We would be geopolitizing the interest of our farmers, all those population that depends upon farming, farming sector. Because Americans want free trade in farm, farming, for farmers, in farming areas also, in agriculture also. But in case, if we resist that, then there are repercussions. There are repercussions that uh uh American government is trying very hard to reduce our exports and their sanctions have started hurting our pharmaceutical companies, our IT industry. Our IT industry which is already under stress, twelve thousand or more people were thrown out of TCS. What would happen now? More and more people would become jobless in IT sector. So what concern should be more important for the government? The concern of the IT sector or the concern of our farmers? Both of these two sectors, people, whether they are software engineers or whether they are farmers, they are Indians. And interest of both of these two segments are important. A software engineer who has a wife and children, who has a parents and who has a family to take, to take care of. If he is thrown out of job at an age of forty or fifty, then it will be terrible time for him. How can we uh show, how can we not be sensitive towards his, towards him? But also a farmer also, a farmer whose products, whose market is being captured by foreign multinational companies. That is also a very serious situation. So whose interests should we take care of? This is an ethical dilemma for our government. Got it? So ethical dilemmas are when you have to make a choice between two or more articles or two or more path. And all of them are either bad or all of them are either, are good. These kind of ethical dilemmas, they exist between, exist in our lives. And it's very important for us to resolve them. How can we resolve these ethical dilemmas? This is another important dimension that we can explore and maybe we will explore on some other date. Okay friends, so this is some overview of universal human values. Our topics, our areas, okay, so. This is uh, okay, self-realization, we have discussed why self-realization is important. Self-realization is, as I said, when we try to understand beyond our identities. So you are not just a software engineer, I am not just a teacher, I am more than that. Okay, and why are we taking up a career? Because of some passion or because of peer pressure and so on. So there can be many more questions which we have discussed in self-realization. Uh one, another topic is journey versus destination. As I said, this is very important for you all. Uh journey versus destination, what is more important and is life a journey or is life a destination? This is a very important, very important topic. I think we have, I have dealt with this topic in, in classes. Duty versus goal, the dialectics between duty and goals. Okay, we have discussed this. Duty, uh for example, there is an engineer, he has a foreign job offer. But should he stay and support his parents or should he move to the foreign country? What comes first, duty or goals? There are many examples. I, I, I think we just, uh I'll give you some examples, some of, of a soldier. That you can use and you can add your own examples also. Ethical dilemmas, a similar topic. Okay, uh then ethics, what's the importance of ethics in life? Some, and the next topic was happiness. What is happiness? And happiness, an important area here is what is sustainable happiness? What do you understand by sustainable happiness? Happiness which can be sustained. It's not a temporary happiness. So it's easy to be happy in life. For a day, you can be very happy. What is more important is how do you be happy, how do you uh attain happiness for a longer duration in life? So it's not just today's happiness that matters, it's not just this month's happiness that matters. It's the happiness of the longer, um in, in the long term. Okay, so then we thought, we, I told you about this topic, this harmony in life. You can take a screenshot also. Harmony in life. I told you about this harmony in life, the different segments of harmony in life, there's uh harmony of self. Uh how, harmony with self, harmony with family, harmony with society, harmony with nature, all these areas are important for us to understand. Next is uh some examples of universal values. Truth, love, respect, non-violence, peace, justice, etc. And why they are universal, you also need to understand them. And you can debate and argue whether this is what, universal or not. Is the idea of non-violence universal or not? What do you think? So you can argue on that, whether they are universal or not universal. Okay, so this is, these are some, again, snapshot of the important topics. Okay, uh self, why self-realization is important and journey and destination and duty and goals and ethics and sustainable happiness and harmony and universal values, okay? So this was friends, uh a brief discussion, I think. I should be, I will be moving towards closure. Okay, so anything from your side? Does anyone want to ask? Hello?
No sir, no any problem.
I think notes iske, jita aapko maine samjhaaya, utna kafi hai. Rest, I think you can search from your own sites. Koi book to hai nahi, okay? If you want, I can share a book, but book will be very humongous. I know that you will not be interested to read books. Okay, these are the, if you want, you can take, I can show you again these, these images, you can take their screenshot if you want.
Notes bhej dena sir.
Bache, beta notes nahi hai iske, issse aadham, kuch aapko nahi dunga, itni spoon feeding main nahi karunga aapko. Aapko notes bhi hoon, itne important topics jo hai, wo maine aapko saare bata diye, thoda sa, I have explained also them. And you should be able to address them, thik hai bache, uske notes, iske, asuske nahi. Uh kisko, kon puch raha hai? Let me, let me know. Any other doubt?
Sir, integrity kya batae the?
Integrity maine batae tha, beta integrity hota hai, when you are doing what you claim. Kisne bola? Kisne pucha?
Sir, Rithik Kumar.
Rithik Kumar, Rithik, aap jo claim karte ho ki main yeh kam kar raha hu. Aur maine andar yeh values hai. Aur yeh values huni chahiye, thik hai? Har kisi ke profession ki alag values hoti hai. To kya uske andar wo, wo wali values hai? Jaise ek shopkeeper ka jo value system hai, wo ek teacher ke value system se, thoda alag hota. Ek teacher ke value system hai, ek sales ke marketing person se alag hoga. Okay, jiska, jiska kam aapko koi product bechna hai. Kya uska wahi value system hoga, jo ek teacher ke value system hoga? No sir. Dono value system alag hoga. Ab dono kon se value system ko life main follow kare? Dono, us value system ko life main follow kare, jo unka profession hai. Jee. Okay, mera kam yahan pe teacher hai, main aapko, us sab, wo wala subject sikha raha hu, jo ki mujhe diya gaya hai, padhane ke liye. Aur uske according aapko values sikha raha hu. Agar main yahan par sales, sales representative ke tarah main value system ko to promote nahi kar sakte. Right? Lekin sales aur yahi kam sales representative ko bhi sochna chahiye, sales representative. Apne showroom me aapko ethics ke bare me padhane lag jaye, aapko religion ke bare me, spirituality ke bare me padhane lag jaye, apni product bechne ke jahen. To kya wo sahi kam kar raha hai?
No sir.
Nahi, galat kar raha hai. Oh, haan, to aise hi ek, yeh baat hume sochni, sochni ke zorat hai ki isse tarik se dekhiye, agar ek, 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 ek aarmi ka soldier hai. Agar, kya usse non-violence ke bare me sochna chahiye bahut batao? Usse, ya phir jab agar war ho to kya wo wahan pe yeh soche, knahi Gandhi ji ne kaha tha, non-violence bahut zorii cheez hai, Gandhi ji was father of nation.
Haan.
To wo apni, apne profession ko lekar, apne value system ko lekar committed nahi. Aapka jo bhi value system hai. Jo apne public me kaha ke, haan, main aisa karta hu. Ab aap usko hi kariye. Ab wahan pe jhoot mat kariye, thik hai?
Sir, universal value matlab ki jo sabke liye lagu ho.
Haan, universal values matlab, jo sabke liye lagu ho. Jo sabke liye lagu ho. Jaise ki kuch values hai, wo sabke liye lagu nahi hoti. Jaise kuch values hai, south me alag hai, north me alag hai. Ab aapko example deta hu, jaise south me, in, in north India me, bahut se women, jab puja karte hai, wo sar ke upar apne pallu dhakh lete hai. Apne ghoron me dekha hoga. Jee, bahut, bahut se, nor, north India me, jab, jab puja hoti hai, tab the women in the house. They cover their head with a pallu or something, thik hai? Magar south me, aisa kuch nahi hota. Jab puja hoti hai, wo nahi dhakte apne sirper pallu. Wo pallu apne sirme, tabhi dhakte hai, jab koi funeral hota. To sar pe pallu dhakna, ya kisi bhi tarah ki koi dress ko follow karna, kya ek universal value hai? Universal value, nahi hai, yeh jahen jahe par badalti hai. North me kuch hai, south me kuch hai.
Local language. Sorry, universal value fir truth vega ra hai.
Haan, universal value truth hai. Ab jaise dekha jaye, ki jaise alag-alag religion hotai hai, to sab religion me bahut se chizo par differences hotai hai, food pe bahut differences hotai hai. Jo food, uh hinduism me recommended hai, ho sakta hai, dusre religion me recommended na ho. Ya kuch prohibited ho. Ek christianity me wo log drinks le lete hai. That is, that is okay, that is permissible, that is permissible also, unke kuch religious festival me wo log promote bhi karte hai.
Alkohol. Truth bhi, truth bhi to universal, nahi ho sakta, maan ke chaliye. Soldier hai apne desh ka, wo dusre desh ke soldier ko apna stature to nahi bataega, truth to nahi bolega wahan pe.
Haan, to, lekin truth ko hum universal value usle maanthe, main ek pehle baat to, jaise main aapko example diya, ki religion ke example diya. To religion me dress, food, in sabko lekar bahut differences hai. Lekin sabhi religion more or less kahate hai ki aapko truthful huna chahiye. Sabhi religion aisa bolenge. Ki aapko truthful huna chahiye. Hinduism bhi kahayega, baaki religions bhi kahenge, christianity bhi kahayega. Ki, uh, aap dekhiye ki sabhi religion jo hai, yeh kahenge ki greed, hamen, hamen greed ko follow nahi karna chahiye. Thik hai? To, hindu religion me, for example, gita kehti hai ki, uh three gate, there are three gateways to health. Three gateways to health, narak ke tine dwar hai. Usme kya kya hai? Anger, lust and greed. A greed hai, yeh lust hai, yeh gateway to hell hai. Aesa hi christianity kehti hai, seven cardinal sins hai, christianity me concept, usme bhi greed ko kaha jayega. Islam me bhi kaha jayega. To greed, shikhism me kaha jayega. Sabhi religion yahan pe ake common grounds jo hai. Ki, ki greed ek galat cheez hai, thik hai? Greed, suras ra, greed nahi huna chahiye.
Greed ka matlab kya hota hai?
Greed ka matlab hota hai. Usse zada desire karna, jitni aapki zorat hai. Ach. Thik hai? Aapka, aapne, aapko bhuk lag, lagti hai, aapke, aapke desire ke mujhe roz khana mil jaye, kya ek greed hai? Yeh greed nahi hai, ky aapki utni desire hai. Lekin agar aap ye desire kare, ki maine pas ek thali to ari hai, maine pas do thali aur extra padhi rahe. Bhal hi main aage de unko fain, yeh greed hai. Aesa hi, ek important question jo hai, ki desire of sensual pleasures, kya yeh galat hai? Jab, ab ispe gita kya kehti hai, bhagwa gita kya kehti hai, kaise pata chale galat hai ki nahi, jitna aapki zorat hai, utna koi galat nahi. For example, every human being is entitled for marriage. Aap marriage kijiye, pursue those sensual pleasure in, in marriage. That is your right, that is okay. Magar uske baahar agar aap koshish karte hai, marriage ke baahar, fir wo greed hai, fir wo lust hai, fir wo unethical hai. Usko koi bhi religion permit nahi karega. Sabhi religion uski, usko criticize karenge. Ki outside marriage, adultery ko koi religion promote nahi karega. Wo fir aapka greed hai, wo fir aapki lust hai. Are you getting?
Yes sir.
Greed or greed, jahan, jitna aapko zarab, jitna aapke liye zorii ho, usse zada ki jo desire hoti hai, wo usse greed bolte hai. Ab ek, maine example aapko universal human values me diya tha, truth, truth is a universal human values because all religion they talk about the importance of truth. Fir aapne musse yahan par ek question kia, ki soldier ke liye aapne musse pucha, kesa soldier jo hai, wo truthful huna chahiye ki nahi huna chahiye. Aur aapne bahut acha question kia, I like your question. But I will come to this, aapne ka, aapne ek question musse pucha, ki agar soldier ko dushman pagar leta hai, to kya dushman ke saamne wo jhoot bole ya sach boli? To dekho, ek baat bataiye, ki soldier dushman ke aage jhoot, sach nahi bholega. Kyu ek aur value uski jo batai gayi hai, ki use country ki security ko bahut prime importance deni hai. Lekin wahi soldier jab apne, uh apne officer ko report kar raha hoga, jab wo officer usse puchega. Koi bhi war ke bare me ya preparation ke bare me koi question puchega. To aapko kya lagta hai, ki soldier ko wahan pe sach bolna chahiye ki jhoot bolna chahiye? Sach bolna, sach bolna chahiye, to fir import, aapko yeh bhi dekhna chahiye, ki soldier ki hi life me, bahut se places me, sach ko promote kiya gaya. Aur in fact, aarmi to ek aesa institution hai, jahan pe truthfulness ke leke saath ek word use kya jata hai, ki you should be blunt fully truthful. Ki blunt, blunt matlab ki aap utna sach bolie, ki samne wale ko bura lage to lage. In fact, civil life me hum kai baat fir bhi kahate hai ki, thik hai, thoda vaise sach mat bolo, ki samne wale ka dil toot jaye. Thoda usse bura na lage, lekin aarmi me kahate hai, ki aap sach bolu. Usually blunt, blunt, blunt matlab, is baat ki parma mat karo, ki samne wale ko kaisa lage. Wahan pe, to truth, truthful ya truth ki utni zada important se. Getting it?
Jee.
Haan, to, that is why we say that being truthful ya sach bolna is considered to be a universal human value.
Sir, yeh harmony batae the, kya?
Harmony matlab, jab do or ya do se zada chizo ke bije me, ek samanjh se hota hai. Samanjh se jante hai, samanjh se koi, samanjh se nahi suna apne?
No sir.
Arre, samanjh se matlab, do chizo ko ek saath leke chalna. Acha. Do chizo ko, do alag-alag chizo ko ek saath leke chalna. Jaise parivar hai. Parivar me, uh sabke bije me harmony huni chahiye, thik hai? Ab, ab suppose, suppose wife hai, wife kehti hai ki, hume ghar Delhi me lena chahiye. Pati kahata hai ki, hume ghar Lucknow me lena chahiye. Aur dono lad rahe is baat par. To kya us ghar me kabhi shanti ho, ho payegi? Nabi ta ko harmony, aapko nani padegi na? To, aese hi aapke family ke andar harmony huni chahiye, aese hi hamari harmony, humare, khud ke saath bhi huni chahiye, hamare self ke saath. Yeh thoda aur important topic hai hamare liye, jaise self-realization me bhi maine discuss kia, ki aap khud ke saath bhi har, harmony bana ke rakhie. Jaise, jaise kya na main aap, Rithik, thik hai?
Jee.
Rithik, jaise ki, abe, we are living in a world where advertisement companies. They try to influence our mind and movies, cinema, social media. What they do is, they create disharmony between us and between how we look. Okay, so for example, these companies, social media and especially these companies, cosmetic companies. What they have told us, that beauty lies in being fair, ki gora huna hi sundartha ka maafdand hai. Agar hum kale hai, hum bhure hai, bhiya hum to ghore nahi hai, huma, humara skin to, to, bura ho sakta hai, kalaa ho sakta hai. Kuch ka gora bhi ho sakta hai, lekin agar humare gora nahi hai, to kya fir hum zindagi bhar duki rahe, is baat ko lekar? To, yeh, yahan pe harmony ka concept important ho jata hai, ki aap is baat ko realize kijiye, ki yeh sab ek propaganda hai. Jo, jo cosmetic company hai, wo bas apni fair and lovely bechna chahte hai, apna isse cheeze bechna chahte hai, aur unhonein jhoot fila diya hai, ki jo beauty hai, wo beauty jo hai, it lies in uh ours, in a particular kind of skin color. Aesa hi, or example liye jai, to uh males ke liye, jo perfect body type hai, kya sabhi males ke liye desirable hai, ki unki, unka body, bilkul ek body builder ke tarah ho. Is the physics of a body builder, the best possible physics for a human, for a normal male. Ek healthy huna ek alag cheez hai, athletic, uh health rakna alag cheez hai, lekin bilkul vaise six abs lekar humesha chala jaye, wo to thik nahi hai, body builders ke tarah. Jinka profession hai, wo thik hai. Ab kisi ladke me, agar yeh cheez ajaati hai, ki nahi mujhe, to wahi body building wala ek ek jism banana hai, apna tarashna hai, jab tak mera vesa nahi hoga, aap, maalo depression me rehne lag gaye. To ab aap khud ke saath harmony nahi rak rai. Jaise bhagwan ne aapko banaaya, sap, aur sabka alag-alag body built hota hai. Aapka weight, aapka, aapki height, aapka skin color, aapke balon ka rang. Aapke bole ka andaas, maine se bahut saare cheeze, genetics pe ya fir hamare social background pe depend karte hai. To kya hum, yeh, agar hum yeh baat na samjhae, ki uh hum kya hai, aur kya, humare aaspas ka yeh jo system hai, advertisement companies hai, movies hai, Bollywood hai, yeh sab hume, humare andar yeh zahar dal raha hai. Ki jab tak aapke pas ek ghore nahi ho gaya, afi jab tak aapki body builder jaise body nahi hogi, ya fir ladkiyon ke man me dal diya jata hai. Young girls ke man me, ki bilkul patla huna hai, slim huna hai. Aur ek bahut, jo problem hai, adolescent, adolescents me bahut se ladke ladkiyon me hoti hai.
Or ek bahut jo problem hai, adolescent, adolescence me bahut se ladke ladkeon me hoti hai, ki thik se khana nahi kate. Anemia huni lagta hai. Kyon? Kyunki unko lagta hai, ki hamari body jo hai, bilkul vaise huni chahiye, jaise ki social media pe ya Instagram me ya movies me, inki, inki celebrities ki hai. To yahan pe hum dekha rai hai, jo log aisa karte hai, vo khud ke saath talme liya, khud ke saath samanjh jisse nahi bhitha paare. Agar aisa nahi karenge, to zindagi bhar duki rahe. Are you getting? To khud ko pehchanna, khud ki desires ko pehchanna, khud ki kamyon ko pehchanna. Or usko, unko accept kar lena, ki haan, thik hai, main kalah hu to kalah hu. This is, yeh, mujhe bhagwan ne diya, it is okay, meri height kam hai to kam hai, zyada hai to zyada hai. Koi bhi body type, jiska jasa hai, usko accept thoro, thik hai, yeh mera body type hai, aesa mujhe bhagwan ne banaaya, I'm happy with that. Okay, so this is an example of harmony, harmony with your own self. Aise hi harmony with your family, harmony with your nation, harmony with, alag-alag level paid. Depend karte hai, alag-alag level par exist karte hai, thik hai?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Okay, to ab hum can we close this discussion now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, friends, so with this I will be closing this discussion, I hope this was beneficial to you all, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, sir, thank you.